We took a short recess, so we need to wait for these guys to come back.
Here he comes. I'm pretty sure it does.
Hmm?
I don't...I think they're all equipped with them. I don't know where it is.
What's that?
The AED.
Yeah.
The February.
There's one in the building. I don't know where it is.
That's a Kenny Smith question. I honestly don't know where it is. Where's the AED in this building?
It should be portable, shouldn't it?
They might have a portable one, too, but they're supposed to leave the door unlocked.
Nurses probably.
Okay, you ready? Okay. Can we bring this meeting back to order?
Mr. Schat had the floor.
Mr. Schat?
So the number for the monitors is about 450?
450, approximately.
450, though. And did I miss anything over the music or is it library?
Did you say library?
And library?
Library?
Yes, that's correct.
You said that. No, then, and physical education?
Yes.
Yes, then you got them all.
Okay. And what's the... Kitterburg, what's the amount?
It's about 450. It's in the $400,000 range as well?
436.
436.
Thank you. I attended Mr. Shenee's curriculum here today. And just gave my opinion. And I'm going to work on the technical there, but you know, on the curriculum, and so I'll just give every program. My part, as an entire educator, is in kindergarten along with the young college. That's the main reason students go to school. And I know Mr. Shenee was nice during the very nice, the grade and math scores. And then if he specifically said high school, I'm like, example, I was going to high school.
That's correct.
The process against kindergarten, I know you were trying to swipe this. I see a high school senior doing well in anything, it's because of kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, second grade teacher, the whole way up. See kindergarten move in this district, talk about the possibility of people coming to this district, and it's going to go, it's going to go better. So that just, that just gives you more work. And I'm all with... I don't think we're breaking something, which I don't think is involved. But we still don't understand these computers. And I'm still confused. You're going to do something in kindergarten, you're putting a preliminary budget out, which is basically the same as the December one, no changes, is that correct?
There might be a couple of minor changes, but it's going to be published in the PDE.
Kind of like you read at the beginning of the meeting, was 4.9?
That's correct.
Okay. And by doing that, you will have the option of going above the index with the exceptions. That's an option. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And by you voting the preliminary budget that gives you that option?
That's correct.
Or does he will?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Say that again, Mr. Schat?
No, I don't have to do it. I just wanted to know about the exception. Okay, so by preliminary, give you the option of going higher or to save the one to the exception.
That's correct. That's correct.
Does it pay any other kind of vote to say that you may go above those two together, which would be the...
That's going to referendum.
I thought we were talking about, I heard someone that put this, I don't know, 111 days.
You're talking about a referendum?
Yes.
And so we'd have to pose a referendum to the public before the primary date of March, like 22nd? We'd have to post a referendum for the public to consider?
We'd have to ask March for a May referendum.
March 22nd is our deadline to submit the questions.
Right, for the May.
To the Board of Elections.
Then I was reading something wrong about 111 days before the primary. I probably did something wrong, 111 days before the primary.
110 days. 110 days is what I asked them tonight to either post a preliminary or to approve a resolution not to go above the index.
All right. So you do what you preliminary, you're letting all the options stay, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what maybe it might be?
You're welcome. Any other public comment?
Shane Cockle, a 39-hour, few numbers for your budget. I would ask you, as a board, to overlook that man and make sure for the last several years of this problem, their expenses were high and their costs low. And some years it was a million and a half off. That's a huge, that's a huge number that we're talking about, the cuts. Last year I sent an email, I don't know if you guys see my email, which is a link, or if you read it, I'll, I'll, I'll re-send it again, about this sort of motion and the different options that it had. And what happened was, I think we had over a four million dollar hole. There was individuals on the board saying, this is hard, we have to cut it, and by the time it came towards the end and taxes were talking about raising, I'm not, I'm not supporting or this, raising taxes, or asking you what you have to do. Those, the same people who had those problems, you know, with making these cuts, said, well, you know, we're going to need a tax increase. And rightly so. We made a group of tax increases, not a lot of that, but more equipment came in at the end, your numbers were all, and I think if you keep looking at those budget numbers, you know, don't just, you know, this is it, we're 4.9, every month, do it on it, and keep looking, because every 10, 20, $50,000 is going to help. Keep looking, you know, at your income and your expenditures. Second, with the music. It costs me 12,000 over dollars, plus the $3,000 for margin gain and inboard. And when you do your cost analysis of what it's costing parents, there's difference when there's, you're told this is what, you know, in order for our club to buy this, is what you have to spend, and so willing to go now and find $200 cleats and $300 baseball bat. I mean, you can go hog fire the sports equipment, but that's their choice. They're not being told.
What's that? Do you need to go? Go ahead, Mr. Cockle.
They're, they're not being told or required, you know, we need this extra money.
I was going to say he works up for you.
But it does add up. And like I said, it cost us $3,000 last year for inboard and, and margin gain. And like I said, there's cost playoffs, do other things, but this, I don't want to say it means it's where your cost, but you, you can use the same baseball bat, your, your, if you want. You can use the same cleats. You don't have to go out and spend $200 in your gear. That's, that's the athletes' choice. And there's one other thing, if you can bear with me, I'm going to separate out of drawing the whole line.
We do have public comment at the end. It comes back to you.
I'm going to interrupt and think why I'm going to state this part, okay? We are probably two months ahead of the process from we were last year, okay? The board is going to scrub these numbers. We're going to have more budget workshops. Last year, if you remember, we came up and said our gap is this, and here's the menu of things that we can choose from, okay? And then we took, you know, A, B, C, D, put them over here, adjusted numbers, we backed up more. This year, we asked the administration to come up with that list, and went back again. And obviously now there's another half, you know, the $400,000 or a half million dollars in ABC. That's going to slide in, something potentially could slide out. The process is 60 days, as Hattaway was last year. We didn't start this process until the end of January last year, probably. We got this at the beginning of December this year. So you get, you have to, I mean, we, we are working the process, and, and if you're, there's just, there's very little left. I mean, I know that, that we get the free down to the bare minimum net education that we need to graduate. Well, we have a strategic, we have a strategic plan, which the state approved, and we need, these are what is required for graduation. And I can tell you, being, being the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, there is not a single course that's left at the high school that is not required for graduation. There is not, we can't say, you know, let's get rid of Microsoft Office, because if you get rid of that as an elective, you're going to have to staff another elective by that many more people. So everything that's left in that course catalog now is required for graduation. So that's gone. Okay, that used to be where we'd go all here and there. There's nothing left there.
Basically, what I'm talking about is that finding a budget, or just coming down to the area and, you know, it's a budget.
You don't know what to say, but...
Sometimes people will serve us.
Okay, hold on a second.
Things going to give us, yeah.
All right. So just so everybody understands, this is a, this is a, it's a work in progress, and it's a work in progress right up until June, June 30th. And the numbers changed. You know why the numbers changed? Because, you know, what we did was we tasked the administration with balancing a budget, and they don't have all the information yet. So they have to make assumptions, okay? And they're going to make assumptions on a very conservative basis, and, and they plug those assumptions into the formula, and that's how we get the balance, the, the budget deficit that we do. And then as a board, we go through the budget, and we'll challenge those assumptions. Should you be using 5% or 3% or 0%? Should it be $20,000 or $5,000? What was it the last 15 years? What was the last five years? You know, what, what are we projected to be going forward? And through that, that, that process, we refine those things to what we, as a group, believe to be the best estimate of what the budget cost would be going forward. Now, they may not be right. I mean, the first thing about any budget is it's not 100% correct. It's an estimate, and we do our best to get there. Now, I'm going to make certain assumptions that Mr. Wolf may disagree with, and we may have to compromise on what those assumptions are going to be. And again, that impacts the accuracy of those assumptions. It's a, it's a, it's budget by consensus, and so I understand there's frustration out there. People want exact numbers, and why, why does the number change from one month to next? It changes because we're doing our job. We're refining those numbers on a, on a weekly and monthly basis.
It's just not our job. We have, we have 11, what is it, 11? Took my glass off. We have a number of tax exonnerations. We get people that have their property tax, uh, property treated.
Right, things change. Information changes.
That number here, these exonnerations we had, or every time a property gets reassessed for a lower amount, which is your right to do, changes that number moving forward that Mrs. Penza made, made a, made a calculation on. And these continue. We get a handful of these every month. So that number moves every month.
I understand that. All I'm saying is it just seems at the end of the process, there's a surplus, and it would be nice if we made the board, not yet an exact number, but, you know.
You're telling, you're saying that a year later, after we've, we've run a surplus? I mean, traditionally, we have, and, and that's a function of saying, okay, well, you know, to what degree have cost, the cost, the, the cost freezes, or the budget freeze that we put in place this year for '12 and '13, how effective is it in reducing our overall expenses going forward? And, you know...
We get resignations, we replace them with a first name.
People retire, other people come on. I mean, lots of things happen throughout a year that impact our current budget, and, you know, so we do the best we can to forecast. At every finance committee meeting, Ms. Penza gets pressed with a question, how are we doing vis a vis our budget? Are we on target? Are we below budget? Are we above budget? And she's got to make an estimate as to where we are overall. And, you know, look, it's, it's not an easy process. What can I tell you? We do the best we can.
Mr. Cockle, just let me, just to help, and, and for the benefit of the public.
And I think we need to move on.
All right, well, let me just, but I think for his benefit, I want to just help the, if you look at one of our major expenditures beyond staff and facilities and the things that we have to pay for, it's in the area of special education. And it's in the area of placement of students who need special services that we can't provide for them here. There have been, it's not inconceivable that we have to put a million to a million point five dollars, a million and $500,000 in our budget on an annual basis for that. And I'm going to give you a couple scenarios. In the event that we would have, let's just say for some odd reason, three new families move into the district in a given school year, and they have students placed in one of those schools, guess what we have to do? We have to absorb that cost. Some of those students come at the cost of 30, 50, 80, $100,000 apiece. And on the, on the flip side of that, if we have placed a few of those and they move out of Daniel Boone, we no longer have that cost. So there's all kinds of volatility in the numbers, but the, the volatility is real. So I, I think it just helps to show one area where it's very real, what Mr. Basil is saying.
And then, and a few years ago, you were known about your special education program, that we're spending all this money to house wars. And one thing I brought up was the potential of using the academy building, and who, rapidly from the other neighborhood school districts, hire a, a SEF and start, except for putting out a 0.5 million, save your own 0.5 million, houses in the academy, contact Exeter, contact Cal State, say this is what we're going to do, we're going to start our own special education program, and then who hired the building, we're going to do this, this, this.
That's a great idea. Let, can you take it to Revenue Enhancement Committee? Because, you know, there's lots of good ideas out there that we need to pursue, but we, we lack some manpower to bird dog those initiatives down. So to the degree that folks like yourself have a good idea, they can go to Revenue Enhancement Committee, share that idea, and we can delegate commissions to go do that research. There's only nine of us here. We all have jobs and other things to do, too, and the administration is obviously tasked with, tasked with running the school district. So there's only so many man-hours that we can allocate to pursue each one of these initiatives. We're happy to take volunteers to, to pursue an idea like that. So come two nights from now to the meeting and share that idea, and, and, you know, we can flesh that thing out, okay? Shane, if you can wait till the end, because we've really got to move, okay? All right. Any other public comment? Thank you. Oh, one more? Sir?
He's just...
Okay. Moving on, all right. Personnel?
Unless there are any questions from the board, we can move through that. We will add as needed, a few retirement, one retirement, number of shifts and, and leaves, et cetera, per FMLA and some other issues there. I think all the paperwork for those so far is in and processed.
Any questions by the board on personnel? Okay, seeing none. Any comment from the public on personnel? All right, seeing none, programs?
Okay, the monthly enrollment is attached for your review. We'll be asking you on the 28th to accept the Pottstown Wellness Foundation grant for the continuation of our longstanding relationship with them, and again, that's not taxpayer dollars, that's through the work that Mrs. Trainer and has been doing over the years and, and that Mrs. Torsia will be picking up. There is a trip scheduled, and those obviously are always posted for board approval. The one item that I do want to call the board's attention, we did have a typographical oversight in the calendar, and you have to be made aware of that. We can't just fix it. So we need to revise the calendar for next year. It doesn't have any impact on the days, et cetera. It's just, it's just something that has to be fixed. To reflect two student early dismissal days on November 25th and 26th, and that's for the fall parent-teacher conferences for those two evenings. And then as a result, we also had to revise one other date to provide an early dismissal date on December 20th, and that's based on our contractual compensatory time for an evening that teachers give up to hold parent conferences on the evening of November 21st. So those are just some minor edits that have to be made, but they do have to go for board approval, even, you can't just fix typographicals with a calendar, okay? And E speaks for itself. Again, trip paid for by the students.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Okay, seeing none. Any questions or comments from the public? All right, on the policy?
Again, these are at the second reading stage. They have been properly vetted by the solicitor, by the, by the Policy Review Committee, and they've also been in front of the board and the public for a month, so they will come forward for final approval on the 28th. Beyond that, I have no further comment on those.
I do have a comment on a previously passed policy on interaction between teacher-student.
Okay.
TSA did, and we were going to typically would be looking at TSA in February, will be going to the regional meetings, and that was the one that the advisory committee, the board, asked us what they were going to be able to do to, I mean, I've been to these things. It's like, it's like herding cats. We've got literally 500 students all over that Quaker Town School Building, and she needs way to be able to get them, and so she had wanted to be able to text and to call, and obviously that is against policy. Then we were going to go back, at least the Policy Committee was going to go back and relook at that, for such, the exempt, for exceptions such as these, and I'm just wondering where that, where that is, or has that gone?
Um, we've currently, you want me to take it?
Go ahead.
Um, doesn't make any difference.
Let me just, first comment, we are looking for technology solutions, and that has been rather extensive. I know Mr. Sermonaro has been working very closely with Mr. Hawes and the rest of the Technology Department to try and find a technology solution. So that unfortunately still hasn't met the, what the committee is looking for. So we're still looking for that technology solution to, to try to do that, so.
I think, I think, you know, the Policy Committee recognizes that technology and the way people communicate is obviously evolving, and, but at the same time, we have this issue of the safety of the students, and quite frankly, the safety of the personnel, our employees. We don't want our employees giving out their personal information to, to, to students, and so it's a two-way street. So that's, that's the rub, and that's what we're trying to work around. In terms of the TSA itself, you know, I think that's a discussion we need to have at the next Policy Committee meeting to solve that particular problem for that particular instance.
Coming up in February.
Yeah, and I think we're going to need to address that, you know, can we get more volunteers to chaperone, which would help facilitate the communication, so that there's, there's teacher-to-chaperone communication as opposed to teacher-to-student? Can we, you know, go buy a couple of walkie-talkies and disseminate walkie-talkies for that one time period? That should be an easy solution, I think.
I just want to bring it, I just wanted to bring it to the forefront.
It's well noted, and I think it's important that you did bring it back to our attention.
The others that were discussed were, you know, wrestling, you know, one wrestling season's almost over, and they've made it through, being able to communicate, you know, and meet changes in times, so that's on it. So I think that the whole thing around sports was addressed somewhat, and it worked around it, but this is something that was brought up.
That is correct. Okay. Yep. Any other questions from board members or comments on policy? Okay, any questions or comments from the public on policy? All right, seeing none, move on to, is there anything under transportation?
No report under transportation this evening.
Okay, old business?
Those are yours.
I put on here the Market Street group discussion, just as a reminder, if you recall, in December, this was a group that was doing marketing and, for school districts, and it was brought to our attention about a year ago by one of a, a member of the public, and it sort of fell off the radar, and I, I shared that information back with the board again. And I know the REC has a full plate of, of issues to discuss, but perhaps you can keep that on your agenda as something that, you know, somebody, give them a call. I don't know whether we task somebody in the administration to do that, or athletic facilitator maybe, or, or a building principal or assistant principal?
What, what we did so far, sorry to interrupt, we were aware, when this conversation came up, it might have been three years ago, that Wilson School District was using them. We have subsequently learned that Wilson has ended their contract with them. I'm not really sure of why. The only comment that I heard was that Wilson felt that they were taking too much of a percentage of the money that they were making from the advertisements. So I, I can't verify that. That's just what I, I've heard. And the other school district that we haven't heard back from yet is Governor Mifflin, so we'll continue to help you research that and find out.
Okay, I think, I think if somebody could actually reach out to the company?
Yes, we can do that as well.
And let's start that conversation.
Well, I was going to actually do that after we finished up with the first contractor in the school media, found out how that contractor's going to work, and then go into another one and using that as a model.
Yeah.
If we don't take too much money, then we might be able to renegotiate their contract.
Actually, the...
This is like one of the things that I have on the...
The positive comment that I got, in fairness with Market Street, was that they were very efficient, that they, they really did take it off of your hands, and they did everything for you, but it seems to come at a pretty high price, too.
Well, some money's better than no money, as far as I'm concerned, so.
Well, I, I'm saying I'm hoping you have both of them, because if we can use both, I would, we might be able to both.
All right. Don't hesitate to reach out and use the administration, though. It shouldn't fall directly under your shoulders.
No, 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 we will take care of that.
Okay? Yeah. All right. You go, and you're working on a lot of other things in terms of pushing agendas forward and stuff like that, and I just want to make sure you don't feel like you need to take that all on yourself. The other issue was this, um, non-district websites that are not controlled by the district, but sort of has the Daniel Boone stamp on that. Do you have any sort of update on...
All I can say is I had a conversation with our Technology Department. There are approximately 15 groups that have auxiliary websites through something called TCteams.com, and the main reason that they have been doing that is that our, our website, frankly, isn't as robust as those websites to do the things that they would like to see done. So right now, it is an un, it's an uncontrolled area.
I guess the, the thought is that they get a response. Is, and, and some websites lie to you, and I'm not sure if they have this ability, or if they do, they can turn it on, where anytime a change is made to that website and, and format, you can get a communication. If we go through and we approve those websites initially, and they go and they change something to that website, and our technology people are to get an email or communication saying, hey, the baseball website changed, they had, you know, then somebody could go out and look at it and say, yeah, does this, pick what we want to have our baseball website have on it or not have on it? And if so, then it moves forward. If not, a communication is, hey, we need to take it down. I don't know if they have that capability. It was RSS capability, but...
Well, I think it's something we need to look at. So is Mr. Hawes here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. If you could put that on your list of things to do, Mr. Hawes, to sort of think about, maybe there's a technology workaround here that makes it easier for everyone. I think our, our concern is just making sure that if the district is being branded on these auxiliary sites, that we have some sort of sense of control on the content and, or oversight on content. And if that means we need to get those folks that are running it to sign some sort of legal document stating that the district has the right to, you know, pull certain content or demand content be brought down in, in order to use our name, or something like that. I don't know whether you need to get Mr. Subers involved.
Maybe Subers.
Uh, I don't have any problem outsourcing this stuff, so to speak, but so long as we've got some sort of oversight on the, on the content of it, aspect of it, I think is what's important. Does anybody else have any other comment on that? Okay. Um, new business?
I have to get back on a little one.
Oh, yes.
I've received a couple of emails, and I've got a question, at least one with the public here, called, do we have a, the dates selected for a budget?
Um, I was going to bring that up as we got to the end here, under new business. Or old business. We can talk about now. Um, I think we do need a budget meeting, and we should schedule that sooner than later, but we don't, we're missing Mr. McCullough and Mr. Sermonaro, so I will send out an email requesting dates that work best for everyone, and we can try to pinpoint that down. I think currently Thursday nights are the open nights for most?
Not everybody in the morning. That's why we've written this.
Close. Okay, well, I know we have a lot of committee nights on Wednesday nights and board meetings on Monday nights, so...
Tuesdays also.
Maybe Tuesdays.
Tuesdays are open.
Are open. We'll see.
The other thought was when we start a, a committee, the whole meeting an hour early, and if it extends into the committee, it's a time by half hour. We just, we just met, we, we had talked about this earlier, that we're going to address portions of the budget prior to the committee, the whole meeting, starting at 7:30, 7:10.
Yeah, I'm going to bring that up.
To go into the committee, the whole meeting. Well, I, you know, scheduling it on enough nights, we can be out for an hour and a half, and we can do it on, on a regular board meeting. Almost already coming in on board meeting nights. It just makes it a lot more convenient to do it that way. Just my first opinion, and I think the number of the other board numbers. I can just start right at, you know, right to half, an hour early, at 7:30, wherever we are, we need to adjourn, move into the next part of the meeting, and if it goes fast enough, maybe we can pick up afterwards or not, but just make, it, it helps me a lot. I mean, I've, I've got a number of nights out as does everybody else, just adding another, doesn't necessarily help, especially when it tends to be three nights a week.
I hear you.
I know everybody else's feelings are, I, I'm just... I know everybody else's feelings are, yeah, I'm certainly tempted to wish. We had talked about using the committee, the whole meeting prior to it.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, 6:30 sometimes can be tough, well, at least for me, to get here on time.
We started at 7 o'clock, go from 7 to 8, and then start at 8 o'clock on the board meeting, I mean, the committee, the whole meeting, I mean, that gives me a little extra time to get here.
Okay, we'll send the email out, and everybody reply, and give us your dates and times that are available, and if Monday nights work best for everyone, that's where we'll go. Actually, on old business, before we move on, we wanted to have a discussion of minutes, before we get to you, Connor, I just, I had shared with the board an edit of the budget minutes, for whatever reason, I didn't get to see those, and I just went back and listened to the budget meeting workshop that we had, and added what I thought was pertinent information as part of those discussions, those minutes.
That's the process of Mr. McCullough reviewing that?
Yeah, for whatever reason, it didn't come across my desk, but then they were approved at the board meeting in December, the voting meeting where I was.
I was just...
Yeah, where the voting was present, so in order to unapprove them and approve the edits, I need sort of board consensus to do that, so I bring that to your attention, we can vote on it at the next voting meeting, if anybody has any objections or you want to add to it or whatever, take it from there, okay?
Post it as additional edits.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Kurtz, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I have a specific prepared, like three attempts to work there, and I know, I'm going to start with a question from Mr. Bevler, the minutes that we write at these meetings, they constitute the official record of the proceeding of the board, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that meeting. For that meeting, yeah. I'd have to take one to that direction, please allow me to conclude this. At the last meeting, I always used to throw previous board secretary's bus and getting my facts, and my question, and it said to you, some of the building projects under dating in recent years, while I welcome exchange ideas and viewpoints, I believe that I was apparently relying on last committee, the whole meeting, but some members of the board. For those board members who are not able to attend the last meeting, please allow them to recount what happened. A taxpayer, a corrupt employee, and asked board question about the building projects under dated by the board in the past 10 years, in the past years. Mr. McCullough and Mr. Sheehan were assigned to the taxpayer as a separate of board members. Mr. McCullough expresses the opinion that we had no choice, listen, minutes, I tried to get that quote, that we had no choice but to build a new stadium, and it was necessary. I disagree with the notion that it was necessary. I did not know the taxpayer, if you're never incorrect, or really is bad, at expensive justified, so I decided to respond, taking advantage of my right to knowledge of the school degree. I mentioned in the previous meeting that a school, I mentioned that at a previous meeting, a school board member indicated that the stadium project would not be funded by the taxpayers, except for a reverend. I was incorrected by the acting president, told the stadium question would only place in the ballot, it would cost over $3.5 million. I was then told after the meeting by the board secretary that I needed to get my facts straight. While I believe I did get my facts straight, they're here in the minutes of November 28, 2008, school board meeting, I now went to review from the official minutes, which are the record facts for the entire school district, on the each three, it said, quote, Mr. Fidler asked us, he wanted to set things straight on the stadium project. He noted that the board worked hard to get funds into the district, and these funds will not affect the debt service. The safety of the stadium is first issue, he noted we need to fix it or close it. The funds to complete the stadium will come from the foundation or the taxpayers by referendum only. He stated that after the renovation of Happy Prime Center and the stadium project, the district will need all means and quote. This is the official record for the school district, and I think it's unfair for board members to accuse me of getting my facts wrong when I got my facts from the minutes that were approved by the board. The minutes clearly state that a referendum would be able to complete the stadium if it were to come, it were to come from taxpayers, and the bond would come from the taxpayers. The bond stadium would never refer. I'm bringing this up because for a more reason, I'm not throwing free these words under the bus, I'm just asking if the minutes clearly reflect the proceedings of the meetings. I've always come to these meetings prepared and with the facts. I will not give the line of numbers, but I have my own opinion and validate my own facts. These minutes are the official record of the board, it is important that they accurately represent what actually happened at board meetings. Before joining this board, I read every copy of the minutes from every school meeting from the past five years, I know the facts, and the next few months are going to disagree over board issues, I asked to attack my opinions and my integrity, I don't want any board members to be treated like I was at the last meeting, in order to prevent this, the minutes should be extremely detailed. Thank you. If it was, I'm not debating whether it was for $3.5 million, if it could refer or not, it's just that's what the minutes said, and that's what I went with. And I don't think it's fair to tell me that I'm misrepresenting someone or getting my facts wrong when I got my facts from the minutes.
You put that to rest now, I mean, you got your point across, I think that it was unfair to say this stuff, Mr. McCullough, here defending himself, but that's besides what. You weren't present at the meeting, that is what Mr. Fidler said.
In the minutes?
In the minutes, he did say that, okay, but that was not ultimately what was decided by the board, when he had an extra $3 million, when Mr. Bevler corrected, when they did the bond extension for a PC, there was an extra $3 million there for the stadium, and that supplemented after Mr. Fidler's statement, it did move on to that they were getting bond money for that, for that $3 million. So you're correct, that was in his initial statement, way early in the process. So you are correct, that was Mr. McCullough, and...
I just asked, and I didn't come here trying to misrepresent anything, but going over to the meeting, I felt that that was how I was, I was attacked, because I was shouting, get your facts straight, and that just wasn't necessary, I don't feel, because I got my facts from the school district website.
I, look, I don't think that any board member should be attacked for stating their opinion, we can all disagree and disagree civilly, the minutes are the official record of a meeting. I can tell you that, as Mr. Sheehan pointed out, that just because somebody states their opinion, and that opinion's recorded in the minutes, doesn't mean that that's the board action. There's several things that were erroneous about Mr. Fidler's comments there, okay? And we don't need to go back and discuss the error of those comments, but they were wrong, but that was his opinion, and when we have our minutes, Mr. McCullough may have an opinion, you may have an opinion, and they may be completely opposite of one another. I think the balance is to make sure that both those opinions are being represented in the minutes, okay? And it's the job of the board president and the secretary to review the minutes and try to make sure that they do have an accurate representation of what was said and wasn't said, and what the ultimate action and deliberation of the board was. But as a board member, everyone here has an opportunity to review those minutes and either vote to approve them or vote to unapprove them, or to edit them prior to the voting meeting, and that's why I ask people, are there any, you know, agenda edits and minute edits that people want to submit, so we have an opportunity to do that. And thankfully, we are now recording all these minutes, these meetings, and those recorded minutes are available for people to read as well, or listen to as well, so that we do get our facts straight about what is opinion and what is fact. But I agree with you, everybody here needs to treat each other civilly and treat each other with good faith.
And that was the overarching theme I was going at, meetings, people come to this table to make a positive impact in the district, I tried to give them a man of disagreements, and I just asked, there's no reason to be rude and brusque, and all you can say is...
All right, is there any other comment on that issue? Okay, new business, Mr. and Dr. Otto?
Board members, you have two special requests this evening, I do believe we actually have a guest here that may be addressing you. For item A, you've received a letter, a copy of a letter, these are here for your consideration, we at the administrative level do not have the authority to exonerate taxes, as you know, that has to come to the board. In the case of the letter in item A, they do, meaning they, that church does pretty much confess, I guess is the best word, or admit, that they did not do their due diligence in getting the exemption and filling their paperwork out properly to be exempt from taxes for a given time. They have since corrected that problem, so that's, that letter addresses that.
So they do qualify them?
They do now, they do now, but they, with the changeover of the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Penza, with the changeover of, I guess it was ownership in the church, they failed to do what they needed to do from a paperwork standpoint, and the county owed the tax.
Yeah, but my point is, previously they were exempt.
That's correct.
The previous owner was exempt. Correct.
The new owner, it's still a church, it's still a nonprofit, so then even though they didn't file the paperwork and they overmissed, they overlooked it, they are currently exempt again.
They will be beginning July 1st of 2013 for the county, they are not for the July 1, 2012 billing that they're asking for.
And the total amount that's due in taxes to us is about $7,800.
Okay, and the second one?
The second one, you've received a rather lengthy explanation, and this is a request from ArmorCast, and if the guest is here, you may want to approach the podium, but the board, you have your attachment and the background given on us, again, you are under no obligation to exonerate, the amount that they're looking for exoneration is approximately $86,000 rounded up for taxes from 2007, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and the reasons for that are explained in the letter, but again, this is a matter for public discourse, so it is here in front of the board, and again, the administration has no authority in this realm, so it is up to the board to make its determination.
Okay, would you please state your name and...
Certainly, my name is Steve Marshall, and I'm the attorney for MECO, contractor demolition, and MECO has an interest in the ArmorCast property, ArmorCast LP, just to give the boards some background with regards to this discussion. For those not familiar with ArmorCast property, it's probably a hundred acres in two parcels, one about 7% of the property is in Birdsboro, and the other 30% is in Union Township, and it's in Swoole River, and it was the site of the old ArmorCast tank factory. In early 2000s, it was considered for being part of the Keystone Opportunity Zone, and that was officially documented in 2004, that it was ownable and was in the KOC. However, the annual application for the tax rate was not filed, in fact, taxes were paid in 2005 and 2006, and then were not filed. My client, MECO, came on scene just about a year and a half ago, and they are a group that demolished the Crystal Main Square, the factory, and they've done a lot of the work on cleaning up and remating the property, and spent a good deal of money on that. They are hopeful and wish to say, through the redevelopment of the property, however they were looking at this opportunity, was there understanding the property was in the KOC from some of the, I guess, marketing leaders, or some, perhaps, you know, the county website, so this issue just came to the fore in the last six months, and so we are here requesting an exoneration under the theory that, you know, this group is ready after a long time, this property is sat fallow, to come in and do some real redevelopment, which is, as you know, down the line, will deliver good revenue for the school district and the municipality. And we'll tell you that we spend early in front of Birdsboro with respect to their taxes, and they have basically hunted T-Wall, they have, they have said their motion that passed, to what extent the school district provides a legal, by the same belief. I'm here with MECO's president, Andy Eber, and also here tonight is Hannah Peck, technically director of the county development, for Mr. Peck to speak for himself, he would like, basically, I think in my letter, the reasoning here, not just to disprove the knowledge, but the fact that the legislature act, this property would have given, if it was in the KOC, I don't think it would have been in any of the tax authorities' budgets as a result, so that is well here.
Okay, is there any questions from board members?
Again, they filed the profit paperwork, paid the taxes, and then up to 2004 and 5?
They paid the taxes, they...
When did they stop, did they have to file paperwork every year?
Or paid the taxes, and so instead of filing the paperwork, the taxes were paid, and then 2007...
They just said, rock, and taxes, and they stopped paying taxes.
Right.
And they never filed the paperwork?
Never filed the paperwork at all in the KOC.
Correct.
2005, they paid the taxes, 2006, they paid the taxes, and then they said, hey, we're done, and then they kept it.
Correct.
And if we don't grant a reduction or exoneration, what happens?
Well, I think that remains to be seen, there, we, and Mrs. Penza, and some of the other representatives of tax authorities that are meeting with the county, we'd likely have decided that March 31st would be the new date for the tax on sale, and in the interim, we would take these steps, one of which was I sent a letter to the DCP to get a state's perspective on a retroactive payment, they did not have any, any exception that would allow for that. I guess the reason we're here is if there is no exoneration or reduction, my clients may have decided whether they would continue to move forward spending money on redevelopment. We take it very well, those who had land plans and there are specs, how many made towards redevelopment's property, but we feel like we have to get this issue behind, we have filed for 2012, but it's the download that all tax issues must be resolved, they said, or fit, I don't know whether they have a 2012 KOC application.
What are the parties are part of the limited partnership? Is it so, what other parties are part of the limited partnership? Is it solely your client?
Right now, no, my client is active with interest, but right now, it's the original owner, Greg's plan, who is the sole shareholder of the ArmorCast, or just the GPD of ArmorCast today.
I guess, I mean, I'm just sort of applying where I'm sitting here, if you've listened to some of the conversation we've had before folks came in, the school district has been and continues to be in a budget crisis, so to speak, so I believe the outstanding tax liability here is $85,000. $85,000 right now is a lot of money to the school district, and it's a lot of programming. So I sit here and think to myself, well, if you spent, it had to have cost millions of dollars to take that property from where it was to where it is today, $85,000 seems like a de minimis amount of money in terms of an overall scope and scale of a redevelopment project of that size. So I understand as a developer, someone's going in there and measuring what their due diligence and costs may be, and whether or not they're going to move forward or not, but engineering fees, legal costs, things of that nature, far exceed the tax liability to the school district, and I don't know what it is to the other municipalities. I sit here and think to myself, well, you know, perhaps MECO needs to renegotiate their contract for the acquisition of this ground, or their equity interest they're in, you know, perhaps they need a greater ownership share to offset the cost, the additional cost for the tax liability, maybe a way for them to move forward with this project, I think that's an issue of negotiation between them and their other limited partners. But where I sit, it just seems to me that for five years, the taxes haven't been paid, and that was a choice that the owner made at the time that he made them, and he made that choice every single year, and for a district that right now is really hurting for some money, $85,000 would go a really long way to do that. I guess I would ask, what's the hardship that's being claimed here by the developer that this board should consider to waive those taxes and those revenues, this school district, that we really desperately need?
Right, and I understand and appreciate everything you said, and I guess I would just, I would just say that I wouldn't turn it on hardship, but development is a, is a, is a industry, and a risky competition, and I think the more the developer can... the developer can, can have certainty on what their, uh, what their spend is and, and all that, um, the more likely they are to go through and, and spend money in common, and where I guess they are is, you're right, eighty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, um, to you, uh, it is to them as well, regardless of the side of the project, but the other thing is, I'm not sure that the eighty-five thousand dollars will absolutely just appear, should you, should you decide to take that stance, um, you know, the owner has indicated that, you know, he thinks that the, uh, the tax revenue is unjust, because of the paper, or, you know, the fund, I, 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 I think there's a lot of, uh, there could be a lot of, uh, groups that have to be going, meanwhile, again, the property is sold for another, you know, so many years, and, and the goal that I think everybody has is to see it develop, so I appreciate everything you're saying, but that's where, where you're making that, that request.
You, you're asking for exoneration or a reduction? I mean, you have a, a reduction number in mind, or is it, is it a reduction to zero?
Um, well, I don't know, uh, negotiating myself.
Okay, I mean, again, I'm just, I'm, you asked for exoneration or reduction, we're either going to vote yes or no in two weeks, and we have no idea what a, what reduction we're looking, that we're going to vote on, so we have to have one, or we have to have something that we're going to vote on, are we going to vote for the reduction, or we're going to vote for the exoneration, or we're going to vote no for both?
Right, well, I think, what you're saying, right, I think, either the board decided which, which reality, the board decided that an exoneration is appropriate, the board decided no, no reduction at all is appropriate, or maybe perhaps there is a number somewhere in between, and I, and I think you have the, the flexibility or the, the means to make that determination.
Like, this property sits over two municipalities.
Yes.
If Birdsboro said they're going to do whatever we do.
Right.
What if you need challenges, or something?
Union Township did not participate in this, uh, they didn't come to the meeting, uh, suspended, and I ended, um, frankly, it's, it's very little, uh, it's a couple, it's probably two thousand dollars, we're talking about, then.
I, I have a concern that obviously, we're in this boat for lack of industry in Birdsboro, and you're telling us, if we vote no for the exoneration, you don't have the money, and probably the project won't go forward, so you're going to hold the process, and maybe it would be better to let the property go to sheriff's sale, and let somebody, and that does develop.
And there's no guarantee that's going to be developed with that.
Right, well, I mean, obviously, with, with the bridge going through, you're going to have heavy truck traffic, that'd be great, a hundred acres for industrial warehouse space.
Well, it, just in terms of the process, it actually would be good to, to sheriff's sale, I mean, it would start with just, uh, a tax claim sale, which would take care of the school district, the county, and the municipalities, tax claim, whoever bought that would take it somewhere, if any other buildings and warehouses that own the property, and that would be the next, you know, six months, a year later, that would be the next, next, uh, that.
Do, I'm sorry, Scott, do you have other questions?
No.
Do other board members have other questions? Okay, um, well, I mean, I, we can't give you an answer tonight, so, um, we have a voting meeting next week, and.
Two weeks.
I'm sorry, two weeks from now, and, um, you know, as a board, we'll recess and we'll discuss this issue, and, and, um, if we feel that there needs to be some communication between us, and you guys, we'll have our solicitor reach out to you, okay?
Yeah.
And if you have any other additional argument, or information you want us to, to consider, you know, by all means, send it to us sooner than later, so that we have the information ahead of time, um, for our deliberations.
Okay, and just a reminder, we have information, when would that vote take place?
We have a vote, um.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Okay, okay, uh, that, that should be fine, the meeting here, just, like you said, it has to be resolved, that, that, that's what we're having on the table, so, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Former public comment, I have one last thing, I just wanted to say, I wanted to acknowledge some good work, uh, high school director, Ben, did bring the Pennsylvania Music Enchanted Association, attended district orchestra festival to the high school, I had the privilege of attending it, this weekend, and it was phenomenal, it was excellent, and what I understand, it did a lot of work to break it, so I'm going to end it.
Okay, um.
We rest.
Okay, great, move on, presentations by public on any issue.
Shane Cockle, the very founder, uh, back to your surplus electricity, you get ten thousand dollars a month that's going back into the district, but you're putting it into the capital reserve, correct?
That's correct.
Why would you put it in the capital reserve when you're hands to the top with that account? It only needs spent for improvements, you're trying to, not include taxes in the school district, trying to see progress, and you're going to hand tie that money to capital improvements only, when you didn't actually put it in your general fund, though the capital improvements are needed for this year, or next year, and that money could be spent on a healthy balance of the budget, but I don't believe it would be the best interest to put it into an account that you can't touch, and then, second is, we just started to speak about taxes, uh, eventually, the school district is going to have to raise taxes, it was this last year, it might not be this year, might not be next year, but eventually, the school district is going to be out of money, uh, Union Township is with a seventy percent tax for this time of year, one forty-five bills, because they weren't responsible enough to slowly implement the small tax here and there, that all of a sudden, they came up to, we're a really short, so, for the citizens of Union Township, that's, that's a hard one to swallow, like, all these taxes coming at, at once, so, you know, no one likes taxes, I would like not to pay my proper taxes in five years, and they come to the school district and say, okay, just cross that off, I don't think that would work, but, uh, I, I don't, I don't like to see taxes, I was going to play, I think, for their responsibility, but, you know, I, I hope the school district, when it's time to increase or not increase that day, you know, if you fall for, you know, a four-year outlaw, and that was just a brilliant idea, so you can see what's going ahead, so, I don't know, in two years, three years, you know, either all, all of the schools shut down, or we get five, eight years, it's more than, you're in the south, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cockle, any other public comment? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second motion to adjourn.
This meeting stands adjourned, thank you.